And so it is Thursday, April 4th. This is the meeting of the midwifery working crew. Just get right into our agenda. Could we have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Moved.
Thank you, Priya. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Thanks very much. And all in favor of approving the meeting minutes from January? Say aye. Excellent. Any opposed? Very good. That motion passes. Could go right into public comment if there's any members of the public that are here that have anything they'd like to share. Seeing and hearing none, we could move on.
I actually want to jump in really quick and give some administrative updates on my end. Um, so I sent out a little, like yet another copy of all of the members of this group. And I'm receiving feedback on everyone's credentials. Because I am currently building a website for this group. So it's going to mostly be a repository of all of our past agendas, recordings. But another thing that we have the opportunity to do with this website is make it a useful tool for people who are interested in the practice of midwifery and for other group members. So one thing that Dante and I would find really useful is I know a lot of resources have been shared in this group previously. But if there are additional resources that you might want to see in like a resources section of the website on DPH, we will take those in and Dante will do her attorney Costa things and you know, determine the best way that we can get all of these on the website. But yeah, so just, uh, I guess two action items for me are make sure that your name and credentials are correct. So that when we put this up, I've got everyone accounted for. And then if you have resources that would be useful. For example, Dante and I were thinking about putting a, the ACNM chart that has all of the different types of licenses and the types of education that's required for it, things along those lines that might be a good use for this group to have access to, for members of the public to see when they're looking at the page for this group. Is there anything you want to add, Dante?
Um, yeah, just also that we're happy to have sort of upcoming events that are related to the topics that we cover in this group to also go up on there. And Malia is so on top of keeping things up to date. So I know she'll be wonderful about, um, you know, maintaining that. Feel free to let us know because I know amongst our email group, things go out, but it would be nice to also make it available on, you know, the website. That's going to be sort of our one stop shop. A history section. Yes, listen, I think that's a great idea. We can have a subsection on history of midwifery and in Connecticut as well. So I think this will be something that can really grow with the group. And we can, you know, when we have presentations or we have visitors from other, you know, walks of life that come and talk to this group, we can kind of link up with, with whatever they're doing. And then on a slightly different topic, I just wanted to give Tanya an inch, a chance to introduce herself because she is a new face here and we have Sam for this last meeting, but she'll be taking Sam's place while Sam is on maternity leave. So Tanya, not to put you on the spot, but if you just want to introduce yourself a little bit, so we can all get to know you, that would be so nice.
Sure. Thanks Dante. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Tonya Douglas. I'm the program officer here at the Connecticut Health Foundation. And I will be joining you all while Sam is away. So nice to meet you all. Some familiar faces, some new, so hello. And yeah, excited to be here and learn with you all. So thanks for having me.
Excellent. Thank you so much. That is such a great idea. Mela and Dante, I think that's wonderful and can't wait to see what sort of collection of resources we can come up with for that. That's awesome. Very exciting. So yeah, so with that, I would love to turn it over to Amy to talk to us about skills and drills.
Hi, everyone. So thank you. I'm really excited to talk about this. I saw a few folks, including Genji at the recent maternal health event in Rocky Hill that was put on by DPH, I think. And it was really good event and we had an opportunity to talk about the desire to be, you know, working more with this group around things that we can be doing collaboratively to elevate community birth as a safe option and to improve safety. And I was talking to Genji and Dante about our Step Up Together program and they asked me to talk about it on this call. So I do have a few slides and I don't know if I have. Oh, it does. It does look like I can. Share. So, um, I'm just going to go through a few slides to tell you what this program is. And the idea is that if we could, you know, find just a little bit of resources to do this, we could conduct this, you know, we could repeat what we're up to with a focus on Connecticut and home birth. So Step Up Together is a program that my company, Primary Maternity Care, developed to improve emergency preparedness and community birth. This is a little, just for those of you that don't know about PMC, this is our mission. We've been around. We're coming up on our four year anniversary. So we were founded in 2020. We focus on enabling integrated, high quality reproductive and perinatal care by strengthening systems for patient engagement, quality improvement, value-based payment and community-based care delivery. So we're kind of working all across the system with a big focus on midwifery models, birth center model in particular, but other midwifery models too, and doula integration, other kind of community, community-based models. These are some of our clients that we work with currently and previously. And this work really grew out of some ongoing work that we've been doing with a couple of these partners, including initially with the purchaser business group on health and now with United Healthcare. And we worked with Karen Scott, who's a black feminist researcher who looks at a lot of different things around maternal health experiences and in particular, black maternal health experiences. And this was a set of focus groups on the experiences of people who experienced transfer from community meeting home or birth center into the hospital. And these are just some quotes, starting with some positive quotes of like what good positive transfer looks like. So respect and dignity, allowing for different choices, feeling validated, having good communication, things that are good care in, in all settings are good care in this context too. We also heard some really negative and, you know, problematic experiences from these people who participated in the focus group as, as well, including punitive treatment, pressure for things, including calling involving cops and law enforcement. And just not feeling believed. So this is, you know, what we were focused on addressing. And we were doing kind of a review of the landscape initially with a focus on California, but it's pretty clear across the country that there was, there are a lot of resources for birth centers and midwives to learn how to do, you know, community birth, but there was a lack of resources that spoke to, to the hospitals and to help them understand community birth and why integration is good and that they should want to participate in it and not just ignore home birth and birth center midwives. So we, we started with a focus on the birth center because that was kind of the funders interest. Developed a comprehensive guide that's like 90 something pages, the hospital guide to integrating the freestanding birth center model that has a lot of different resources and, and is based on like interviews with birth centers and hospitals all around the country. And then we did a learning series last fall that kind of brought in a bunch of those experts that were involved, that we had interviewed and unpacked a lot of the tools and resources. Again, with like for a hospital audience was the, was the idea to try to reach more hospitals to help them see positive examples of collaboration. And then the Action Collaborative, which is focused on developing the drills, clinical emergency drills and, and skills for the clinical providers. And the whole program is focused on this three delays framework, which comes from kind of the global health research world where a lot more people are giving birth in the community. And where there's a real understanding that, that poor outcomes can arise all across the, the spectrum from delaying, seeking care in the first place, or recognizing a problem that requires a higher level of care to delays in reaching that, that higher level of care, you know, issues around transport and distance. And then delays that can also happen once somebody reaches at the hospital, whether that's from just inefficient care or disrespectful care, or you know, those kinds of things. And so really recognizing that to have safe community birth, you have to have safety along that whole, that whole spectrum. So what we're up to right now is, is we have what we're calling an action collaborative, Step Up Together Action Collaborative, focused on strengthening the relationships between hospitals and community birth practices. Helping, helping, we're working currently with just birth centers and their partner hospitals and EMS services. But we're coaching and, and working directly with those practices to develop and strengthen their transfer guidelines and policies. And then all together in a collective where each site is conducting, executing and, and debriefing a drill that starts in the birth center, moves by emergency transport and ends in the hospital. And we're kind of doing a structured community debrief process that so that those sites can all learn from one another and sort of strengthen the overall system. And so we, what we're up to is we have, we provide tools, we like the clinical scenarios and all of the like information that they need to actually run the drill. We provide the learning community and like, you know, both ourselves as you know, experts or whatever, but also the experts, the expertise that's in the community from other birth centers and hospitals that are participating. And then we have both the group coaching sessions and then individual coaching for the hospitals and birth centers. Some of which is happening in person. We're flying, we've been, you know, traveling around the country to some of these sites. So these are the funders we were working with and, and partners on it. And this is where our current participants are, they're all pretty, there's a bunch of them kind of in this region, but they're distributed nationally. And yeah, so I just want to share that this is what we're up to and we're excited about. We have funding right now to develop kind of the infrastructure so that we have the toolkits developed and we have kind of the faculty developed to continue to run more of these collaboratives. And we're going to be doing a lot of data collection and evaluation with this current cohort so that we can continue to improve it. But I guess the offering is if Connecticut home birth midwives and, and if we can get some hospitals interested and the, the one birth center that is in Connecticut is in our current cohort. So they're doing their drill, I think this month. So we would love to kind of extend that and look for other opportunities.
Question?
Yeah.
Amy, first of all, awesome.
Thank you.
But second of all, um, I'm not surprised that birthing centers are stepping up to participate, but how are you doing in terms of finding hospitals that want to be on the other side of this and care enough to learn about this? What's happening there?
I mean, we, for this cohort, there are all 11 participants have their hospitals along with, and it was, they, we required a letter of support from the hospital to participate and none of them have like, you know, ownership states, none of them, you know, have, I think only one of them actually even has like a written transfer agreement. But they all are, you know, collaborating and accepting transfers. And so we, at least for those 11, we were able to get in some cases, really enthusiastic participation. And they're like excited to be part of, you know, this learning community, all of that stuff. It's been pretty cool to see that. We've had some, like one of our teams, the hospital kind of disengaged and hasn't really been present, but yeah, and then I would say this conversation was prompted by the fact that we were standing there with Kim, Kim Marie Montero, is that her name? Did I see Genji come in? Yeah. Who was from Hartford Health System and who was like, I'm interested on behalf of, you know, Hartford Health. So we know at least one person inside of one system who would champion this.
That's great. That's awesome. Thanks.
I have a question, Amy. How is your project aligned with the AIM Patient Safety Bundle? That it's kind of
Yes.
I think endorsed by ACOG.
So the ACOG is coming out with a new AIM resource. It's not, it's not a bundle. They have a couple of different like levels of resources. I think it's called a resource packet or something like that, but it's basically a bundle on community birth transfer. And I'm on the, I'm, I've been one of the people involved in developing that. And so this will be referenced within that as one of the resources. There's also resources like smooth transitions, which is state-based, couple of like state-based programs. That one is in Washington state. And so it's not the only program, but it's aligned and will be highlighted. And I'm talking, I'm going to ACOG, their annual meeting this year and gonna be, they're gonna be highlighting it in some of their communications as far as I understand as well. So yeah, I do think something's shifting on the OB-GYN and hospital side with this stuff. Somebody told me that like, the, at the OB-GYN Hospitalist Conference, this topic was like the standing room only, you know, topic. They didn't have any room for it. So I guess hospitals are trying to figure this out.
Definitely. I think with the patient safety bundles as much as possible aligning like projects and all of that makes it easier to get the buy-in because that's where all the efforts is kind of galvanized around currently.
Yeah, absolutely. I was really thrilled when AIM expressed an interest in this topic for that reason. It's like, that's, you know, where all the patient safety kind of legitimacy has for good, for better, for worse, that's, you know. And it's written into like policy and stuff. Now it's part of the, this big funding that's coming down from the federal government to states for expansion of midwifery. Is can, they're, you know, looking to see connection to AIM and ACOG as well.
Amy, can I ask, as someone who was a former home birth midway and has that experience under your belt, what challenges do you anticipate in accomplishing a similar project between home birth midwives and community hospitals? And what can we home birth midwives do to help facilitate that, get it off the ground? Because this sounds awesome.
Yeah, I think, you know, there are unique issues for home birth that are different from birth center when you have a facility, you know, I think in both directions. There's some unique and a lot of shared things. And so we are, I, we've been working on creating the tools so that they really can be used in multiple settings and be adapted that way. So I think it really would be about wanting, if we could find a group of midwives that were willing to do drills in, you know, in various parts of the community and collaborate and do some outreach to EMS providers so that we can have, you know, transport represented in these drills. And then find a few hospitals around the state and just do, you know, some scenarios around the state, including different combinations of midwives and document those in some way so that those who can't be physically present for them can still like learn. Or we could do kind of a community debrief where, you know, we kind of, everybody does it with their, you know, pairs up with a hospital or, and an EMS in different parts of the state. And then we can community debrief and really like the tools will be there. We would need to probably raise a little bit of funding to get, you know, PMC's involvement and be able to like structure a program that could be specific, but I don't think it would be, you know, insurmountable amount of money and and so I would say if we could get a little proposal together of like how many midwives we think we could get interested and if we could start with Hartford Health, but maybe do some outreach. If, you know, it starts with the low hanging fruit people that you're already collaborating with. Those would be the easiest people to do this with. And then we can hopefully have something to show the places where maybe they're not as enlightened and they, you know, need to be in the next cohort or something.
Yeah. That's a great idea. And I can certainly work to get together a list of midwives that, you know, would be interested in participating.
Yeah. And I'm more than happy to like create a little, you know, interest group meeting or something to try to be part of that, but
Great.
Cool.
And speaking to that, is there any kind of standard like paperwork, administrative stuff that, you know, would go with either the mom or the baby to the hospital?
We have a bunch of those tools in the toolkit as far as like templated transfer sheet and stuff like that. So that's part of when we put together a cohort where we're, you know, bringing people along from like the planning to the doing and then debriefing, that's part of what we're doing is making sure that they have the process, you know, that the sort of ideal process mapped out so that when you're doing a drill, you're testing that process. So that could include any kind of documentation. But yeah, I have some examples.
If somebody has like a computer, you know, like an EMR, like mobile midwife or something, couldn't they, you know, fax over some information? I mean, rather than like the whole chart and then just, you know, like give, give a report. You know, like, um, if you have all of their, say, blood work that you've done in the prenatal panel, you can just fax it over to them, you know?
Yeah, I think that's I, uh, yeah, so there's a question about the deck. I will share the deck. To answer your question, I think there are a bunch of like best practices around documenting about, around like transfer documentation. And I think a lot of people that are using the, the EMRs that are specific to home birth have, you know, like most of them provide a couple of different structured options for how to pull together a chart for a transfer. So I think having that and then, and then the other pieces for all of the hospitals that you might be transferring to, knowing who to send that to. Is there some central, you know, fax number for the transfer center? Or is it, you know, a certain OB-GYN practice or?
That would be helpful.
Yeah. So I think we can, um, once we get the hospitals to the table, we can map out those things like, okay, what, what do they need to see documentation wise? What, where does that need to go? Who, you know, as far as fa, what fax or email? What phone numbers and so on. So yeah, we have some tools to like collect all of that. And I think I've shared a couple of those previously, but I can dig them up. I see Dante's hand is up.
Um, so I just wanted to chime in and say, unfortunately, although our director of the office of EMS was supposed to be here today, she's out sick. But this is recorded. I have briefed her on this idea a couple of times. And so, and also we have an ED doc who helps in that office and he's really interested. So I think, you know, the home birth midwives, you guys can kind of figure out who wants to be involved and how this would look for you. And then we can bring this to OEMS and have them watch the recording of this and get the slides and sort of think through what their role can be in helping to identify folks to help with a pilot or whatever we decide is the first step in kind of actually trying this. So I just wanted to chime in on that. And then I also just had a question as you were presenting the steps. If you could dig into sort of what the community debrief is like and what you learn from that and like how you then translate those lessons into future sort of process improvement. And, and I know you said you're in the process of, you know, kind of gathering the data and then analyzing it from a program wide. But I mean, having done these through this program, I'm sure you just have some initial insight about, you know, what that looks like.
Yeah, we've done, we have like run a whole cycle a couple of times and have some pilot data on all of this as well. But the community debrief of all, I mean, we spent a lot of time teaching debriefing in this program. And we basically always come back to four questions in the same four order of kind of what happened, high level, like what was the scenario, what went well? What needs attention or improvement? And what, is there something that needs to change going forward? And so we just, so everybody, the program is structured so that currently the birth centers and the hospitals each do their own half of those, of an emergency as a first drill. So they're just like drilling, the birth center is just drilling up to the point of transfer and the hospital is like picking it up from there, but they're doing it separately. So they can kind of, you know, have some safety before they have to pull the pieces together. And so we've already community debriefed that, and then they are doing their full transfer drill. And we do a community debrief at the end. And so, but they've all individually debriefed with those questions, you know, what, what just happened? What went well? What needs attention or improvement? And what's a process or, you know, policy that we need to change going forward? And so we just bring that together, you know, for the community and have everybody kind of reflect back what they, what the key insights from each of those questions were. And generally we hear like, and I went in person and, and did one in one of our sites in New Jersey and you know, there's, they were reflecting on how, you know, you have to get a blood pressure while you also are trying to think about starting an IV and calling. And it's actually quite a lot to do when you only have two people. And so they were problem solving, like, you know, it would be really helpful if we had a, one of those auto blood pressure cuffs that you can set and get at work and also like a pulse ox. So sometimes it's like a piece of equipment we're going to go buy. And then we have a close the loop kind of thing where we have to assign somebody to actually do the thing, you know, whatever the, the ideas that come up. So it might be a piece of equipment or some training that needs to be shored up. I did one a couple of years ago where the EMS took the patient to the wrong hospital. It was like they went the adult instead of the children's hospital for a newborn. And so like, you know, stuff like that happens too. And then you have to be like, well, good thing it wasn't a real patient. So you, and then, you know, often you get like some good communication or good teamwork or good like clinical skills. You know, usually people know what to do, like for a shoulder dystocia, they can do the maneuvers, but it's like remembering to call EMS, you know, reflecting on the timing of some of the decisions around transfer. So that's the kind of stuff that comes up and it's been really powerful to see some of the changes that people have made, really practical, pragmatic patient safety improvements, I would say.
An amazing initiative, Amy.
Thank you, Priya. Yeah, I would love to do it here in Connecticut and it's a labor of love. And now it's like finally has some funding behind it. So we can, you know, build the tools and let the communities use them. Thanks for letting me share about it.
Yes, thank you so much for coming on and talking about, I think you're such a great resources, you know, to, for us to have here, considering your background and that you weren't doing home birth here for so long. Really appreciate you, you know, having you on board. Thank you.
Absolutely.
If anybody wants to use my office in Rocky Hill, it's, uh, there's a parking lot and it's a handicap ramp thing into first level and we could do a drill there because I have a couch and everything. That'd be neat. Yeah. It's, it's, it's perfect for a pseudo home birth situation. I'll let people know that it's available should you need it.
Awesome.
Any other questions or comments before, for Amy before we move forward?
Amy, I do work closely with Kimberly Montero here at Hartford Hospital. So I'm not sure what all the conversations were that you had with her, but I definitely look forward to hearing what, what that partnership looks like.
Awesome. Yeah, she, I think just is supportive in general and Genji and, and she noted, know one another. So I think she was excited about the possibility of, of bringing Hartford Hospital. So thanks for sharing that.
It's so great to see, so great to see everyone's little connections coming together. So then the next topic on our agenda was to discuss what's going on in Hawaii. Hawaii had a bill that was put forth to license midwives, home birth midwives and specifically CPMs. And in response to that bill, the indigenous midwives have a lawsuit. And so I believe one of the articles about that was circulated. Have a lawsuit. And so um, I believe one of the articles about that was circulated. There are a handful of articles about it. It has gotten a fair amount of um, press over the last few months. Hopefully, um, everyone had a chance to kind of look into that a little bit. Um, would love to discuss that because um, some of the same. Um, themes and concerns that um, they have in Hawaii have been um. You know, concerns for uh, the home birth midwives here in Connecticut. Um, should there be, you know, legislation in the future for licensing? Anybody want to start talking about it? Anyone have thoughts to share? Priya, I would love to hear what you think.
I'm ignorant on this. I was, I, this is the first I'm hearing about it. So I was gonna say is if there's anybody here, Sarah or anybody that can sort of. Give a twenty thousand feet overview of what's going on. I'm very eager to learn more. Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, well, um, you know, I I could give just a little short blurb about it, but I know that Dante has been following it as well and she. Also being the another lawyer in the group, maybe I can have Dante go over it and give her perspective.
Yeah, I mean, I can give at least an overview. It's really interesting. It's really worth reading the complaint because. It walks through the big picture of. Why the legislation matters so much in the context of. Serious lack of access to uh, maternal healthcare providers in Hawaii um. Which, you know, there are obviously specific conditions at play there. It's a, an island state. It's, you know, rural. Transportation is a huge issue. Um, all of those factor into the specific sort of. I guess, presentation of the maternal healthcare crisis in Hawaii that makes it unique, but the. The overall what happened is that a law, a licensing law was passed. Um, that has incredibly broad language defining midwifery to include anybody who. Provides like ed- basically advice and information about. Birth and postpartum. So you could easily read that definition of midwifery to include lactation consultants, doulas. You know, I mean, a huge range of folks. It's wild. It's wildly overbroad. Um, and then what happened is the legislature basically allowed. Um, this exemption for traditional birth attendants for a short period of time. So the law was passed in twenty nineteen and then they said until July twenty. Twenty-three, you know, a traditional birth attendant who's really a traditional midwife is allowed to practice. And then even they are. Basically not allowed anymore. And when the law was first passed, the legislature said, we're gonna figure out what to do with them. We're gonna in this. In this span between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-three, we're gonna develop a fr- a structure that will sort of. Include them in this new licensure framework. Um, and they never did that. And so. Twenty twenty-three, July first, twenty twenty-three comes around and all of a sudden the uh, very few, very important traditional. Midwives in the state of Hawaii are now turning people away because they are uh, criminalized in. The care that they're providing to their communities. Um, so that's sort of. What happened to prompt the lawsuit. So the lawsuit was brought by um, the midwives, some student midwives. And then some families who want to use the midwives but don't want it to be illegal. Um. I think what's really interesting, I always think about Lucinda with the history of midwifery. Every state has its own. History. And so Connecticut has a history where we've never regulated. Some types of midwives. Hawaii has a history where they have regulated many types of midwives. So in the nineties. There was a a change, a a relaxation of pre- prohibitions on midwifery and a whole generation. Of um, sort of traditionally trained direct entry midwives. Developed because they were allowed to. So they had, they had been restricted since the forties. Um, and I, again, I think, you know, some of this is so specific to Hawaii because there are these um, ancient traditions that. Are carried on that are sort of picked up by midwives that have been, you know, um. Revisited and and sort of um, revived by midwives in the past three decades. That have specific meaning to the communities that they serve. Um, but it's really interesting to see this like. Up and down and up and down, right? So like in the forties, all of a sudden there were very few midwives. Then, you know. Nineteen nineties come around and there's a relaxation of the law and you get a new generation of community based midwives who are. Truly filling a gap where if you you can't get across the bridge or you have to get in a helicopter to get to literally your nearest. Birthing hospital, you know, you need to have other options, right? Um. And you also want to deliver in a, in a. Setting that is safe for you, that is understanding and 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 sort of concordant with your culture and your community. And I think. You know, when we look at the statistics in, you know, the contiguous US, we see these horrible disparities, but actually. Um, women of color in Hawaii, like, you know, native women, their rates are even worse. The disparities are, the gaps are even hu- like. Huger, which is sort of hard to wrap your head around. Um, but the effect of this law was to basically outlaw. Any midwife who wasn't a hospital-based CNM and all of those are white and trained. You know, in a very specific way. And, you know, that was sort of the impact of this legislation. And so. The claims they brought are all fundamentally con- state constitutional law claims. Um, and it's really interesting too, because this all happened in the context of other arms of the state. Uh, saying, we need more choices in birth and we need, you know, to support midwifery. Um, and then low and behold, the legislature does this and then drops the ball on developing a sort of mechanism for the traditional midwives to be. Included the way they said they would. Um, so that's where it stands. The file, the case just went in. So, you know, we don't know what's gonna, right? These things move slow. Um, but it's.
Do we know who is behind the legislation?
I don't know enough about state politics in Hawaii to tell you. Who had whose ear. That would be really interesting to know. Um, I know that they have had similar problems to so many other states where um, labor and delivery services are closing. So the number of actual places like hospitals to deliver at is shrinking. Um, and so that's the context that this is happening in. I don't know. I really don't know and it would be really interesting to find out. Um, sort of what led to the passage of the law in the first place.
Sarah, thanks for bringing this to our, my attention.
Absolutely. Yeah. And just um, to clarify, um, the bill that this. Is in response to um, had to do with licensing CPMs. I think Dante may have said CNM mistakenly.
It said, I, what I meant is that the only ones who can now practice are CNMs.
Right, right, right. Because there are no um. Yeah, the CPMs don't necessarily meet the requirements. The, the bill was um, promoted as a way to license CPMs. Um, uh, you know, using all the same hot button words that we always hear, like, oh, this is to pursue excellence and midwifery. Um, and one of the things that it required was a um, midwifery education pathway. Um, that involved a MECE school, uh, accreditation from. MECE, which is Midwifery Education Accreditation Council, um, which, you know, over the years. A handful of schools have maintained it. Some have not. Some schools have come and gone, but there are no MECE accredited schools in Hawaii. Um, and so even if um, someone, you know, let's say one of these indigenous midwives in Hawaii did want to. Pursue that um, pathway, they would have to go somewhere else to um, get that. There are a couple of schools that have a. Um, part distance program, but they would still be required to travel three thousand plus miles. Um, for parts of their education. Um, and so effectively, like Dante said, it makes it impossible for them to. Become licensed midwives and effectively eliminates um, the option for all those families to have. Compliment midwifery care that's not illegal. And like Lucinda said, this is a big part of the, you know, history of midwifery. It's a theme goes way back. That we, you know, promote licensing or some sort of, you know, government um, involvement, um, you know. With with the hopes, you know, that it would create safety and access. But then when you look a little closer. Um, it eliminates the midwives that are doing just that, that are creating access and that are, you know. Helping families have um, safe births. So it is something that um, I think that we should keep our eyes on. Um, it's very similar to a lot of the um, states that have chosen to license CPMs in the last few years. Many of them do require um, the MECE education pathway, even though there are um, a few different pathways to getting the CPM. And in the end, everyone takes the same exam and everyone has the same clinical requirements. Um, you know, requiring one, an education from one of those schools is um, very tricky and some would argue, you know, elitist. Because it does just eliminate options.
Yeah, I I just wanted to quickly say that there is a similar history to traditional black midwives in the United States. The indigenous midwives that were practicing during, they brought their culture, their spirituality, they were safe. But again, with colonization, those things were viewed as harmful. And we're seeing the results of that. I was trying to find the um, most recent statistics. That around, I want to say like twenty nineteen, their rates of maternal mortality surpassed black women. And we don't even have the current results, but it already shows a harm in these communities because they don't have people who are in the community who can, are trained. In their own way of being trained, um, are safe and increased access. But it shows again how the government can come in and cause harm because then you're using different requirements. You're using a language is not, that's not native to even the community that's served. You have these educational requirements in these programs that. People from the community can't get accepted into. You know, or they're getting to these programs and they can't graduate because no one really understands where they're coming from and they're not culturally sensitive or responsive. So it's just this continued pattern. But the most important thing is that people are making decisions about what's safe midwifery and what is not. And that leaves behind people who are doing what they can in their communities and can do it well. But though that information never makes it. Too, when the decisions are being made about licensure or regulation. So that's, that's just a concern that I have. But we definitely need to keep an eye on what's happening there.
Absolutely. That's exactly it.
Um, thank you, Lucinda, for that. I was reminded about something I heard in a presentation at a conference. Maybe two or three years ago, when you were talking, Sarah, about education and the pathway. So I wanted to clarify. If my understanding is still the same or things have changed as far as. Um, in the New England region, there are no midwifery programs that are um. Supported by federal funding. And so that creates a barrier for for entry. Now, is that because of the accreditation pathway that you're talking about? Is that why they don't get funded federally?
So I'm, I'm not entirely um, sure. I believe that there was. A MAKE accredited school in Maine that has since closed. But I don't know if they ever were eligible for federal funding. I would have to get back to you on that. I do know that there is a school in Utah and in Washington State. That their particular programs are eligible for, say, um, Pell Grants, that sort of thing. Um, but I'm, I'm not entirely sure about, you know, the ins and outs and the details. Um, but there is no longer. A MAKE accredited school in New England. Um, that, like I said, there was that one in Maine, but they have since closed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And maybe if anyone else knows more up to date information about that, they could speak up.
I I'm wondering if um, the University of Bridgeport still has their midwifery. Thing. It wasn't like a full midwifery program, but it was sort of like a branch of their naturopath. Studies. So I don't, I don't know if that still exists. And I don't, I don't know. I don't think it was MAKE accredited. I'm not really sure of the ins and outs of it, but that's the only other one I've ever heard of besides the one in Maine uh, for New England.
Yes, I I do remember that. I do remember that that being some sort of. It may have been a certificate program or something, but I think you're right, Genji. It was part of their naturopathic um. School there.
Yeah, they're um, like one of their deans, Beth Pimentel was her name. She was a CPM. Like, I think she trained at best year and she practiced in some other state and then. So I think she was trying to get that going, but I don't even think their naturopath program still exists. Didn't they close a bunch of their health? Ooh. Programs, but she's, she is no longer there and um, I don't think there's any midwifery happening there.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any midwifery at Bridgeport either. And um, yeah, a couple of years ago, they did like a big restructure of the naturopathic program and. Um, took out a bunch of things. I'm not even sure that the naturopathic. Program itself still exists there at all.
It doesn't, unfortunately, yeah.
I had a, just something that I just wanted to like highlight about what Lucinda and Sarah were saying about like cultural sensitivity and this. Thing going on in Hawaii, but everywhere. And. I don't know, something that just kind of an idea that came to me was maybe if we're gonna work with Amy and work about transfer, you know, work. You know, talking about transfers and. Um, you know, this bigger conversation of education between EMS and hospitals is. It would be lovely to have like more cultural. Education, like weaved into that. Cause I feel like that's a way. If we're gonna be doing that and educating, that's a way to like weave those teachings in a little bit deeper. Um. Because we do see such a. A lack of that sensitivity across the board and a lack of understanding why all of. America's cultural differences in birth are so, so important to recognize and really. Hold um, deeply.
Yeah. Hey Sarah, I just went online and there's a place called the National Midwifery Institute that's MAKE accredited in Vermont. I never heard of it, Middlebury, Vermont.
Interesting. I wonder if they make federal funding?
I don't, this doesn't, this is not, this is on the MECE website, so I don't know if they get.
I don't think they get federal funding. Am I, and am I, they're mostly distance learning.
Some MAKE accredited. Correspondence education.
There are some schools, I believe there's one in um, that may be one, NMI and um. I believe there's one in, I want to say New Mexico. There are some MECE schools that have the MECE accreditation. Um, so if you do graduate from there, you have that particular pathway towards a state license that requires it. Um, but um, there is no federal funding for that. So that education is largely inaccessible to. The folks who traditionally were becoming midwives, which was women in their community who wanted to. Broaden their educations so that they could have more skills um, to serve. Um, you know, traditionally would start with someone that had a lot of children that helped their sisters and aunts and friends and. And then, you know, wanted to broaden that and get more education, more skills. And so those are not typically people that are, you know. Um, fresh out of undergrad and looking for a career path and have the money to pay for a, an elite education.
Yeah, Kara, Kara, you said something that was so important that I think um, should be something that's addressed. Uh, within this, you know, this work group. And that's really about that culturally sensitive, culturally responsive care. Because a lot of this attention is because of the racial disparities that exist. And even though, like with the women that I work with, even though they have, you know, consider was considered a healthy pregnancy, healthy delivery. There's still a lot of racial trauma they experience when they come in for care, like they're not believed. They're looked at as drug seeking. You know, like we still see like that experience, birth experience is ruined because there's someone in front of them who's not culturally aware. And the roots of midwifery is really about understanding community, understanding the population that you're working. And the roots of midwifery is really about understanding community, understanding the population that you're working with. And as we, again, look at these histories of how people were weeded out, it really placed women of color or certain communities at risk. You know, and so I think that's just something important to consider. One thing that has come to my attention is the number of barriers that students of color who want to go into midwifery or they're in midwifery programs. They're feeling that isolation. They're having challenges and barriers completing their programs, paying for their programs. So it's like, what, you know, I, I'm so grateful for the doula grant that came out from the Connecticut Health Foundation. Because that's a barrier that's going to be removed so that women can have doulas and have the doula that they want. But what about midwifery? That should be an option whether someone wants to become a midwife or they want to be able to prac- come back and practice in their community. We need to increase options for that, because we can have birth centers, but our birth center is going to be staffed with diverse midwives. That can, anybody that comes in is going to get quality care. So that's just something that I don't want to get lost, because I feel like we can have all of these things, throw money at all these hospitals. But what about the people who need the care the most? The ones who are dying or coming close to dying or just having that experience. You know, everybody remembers their childbirth experience. You know, you could talk to someone who delivered seventy years ago and they'll tell you like it was yesterday. But when is, when you experience trauma, you experience any kind of harm or you had, you know, this beautiful baby, but the way you were treated was not proper. You know, it's like, you know, how, what are we doing to make sure that doesn't, doesn't continue to happen? And I just think that's really the heart of midwifery from, in my eyes. That's the heart of midwifery and I just don't want that to get lost.
That, that is a very valid concern and I, you know, speak for, I speak confidently for the other home birth midwives in Connecticut, that that's a concern of ours as well. And, and it's something that we are so dedicated to protecting because interestingly enough, you know, up until five years ago, Connecticut did not have a, a black home birth midwife. And now we have three midwives of color that are serving the community through, providing home birth midwifery care. And we have three that are about to graduate and, and become available. And we want to protect them so much and make sure that they are able to continue to serve their community. And so when we see things like this happening in Hawaii, we're, we're extremely concerned, right? Because we can easily see it happening here. We have seen what has happened historically. Lucinda, you know more than anybody about how that has played out. And so we're finally in a place, you know, just the ratio of, you know, midwives of color to white midwives in Connecticut and on the home birth scene anyway, is finally shifting to reflect the demographic of the general public. And so it's something that we're very, very, you know, impressed with and, and proud of and we want to support that. I do want to say that I, there is a Yale student midwife that I would love to have on the group as a guest. And Dante and I have talked about this and perhaps we can get her here, you know, as a guest speaker in the next month or so. Because I think that she would have a lot to share that would be valuable as well.
Is that Ashley?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, and we're all like endorse, endorse.
Yeah, I mean, either as a speaker or just to join the group, right? That's something that she's interested in. So we can, we should reach out, Sarah, we could reach out together.
Yeah. And also, how, how sad is it that there are so few black student midwives that we all know who they are, right? We don't all know who all this Yale student midwives are, right? It's, we, we need more midwives of color.
I think also that's why, like, you know, it's important to keep all of these pathways open, which is exactly what we're talking about, because certainly Yale is not accessible for everybody. It's Yale. So, you know, we can't even think that the smaller, just MEAC programs that, you know, are doing scholarships and stuff like that, that's not even accessible for very many people. So to really just really keep that at the forefront, that we need to keep all of the pathways open for everybody to practice and practice in their, you know, like Lucinda, what you were saying, I think that that's like, I think that that's the foundation of like how people should be treated humanely in birth. And then we really start to look at all of the cultural differences. I think that there is that art of midwifery that comes in that I am not going to serve these other communities as well as somebody from their community. I really want to see that stay really, really like, or more present, more alive than it is now.
And, and it's not just to say that because someone is a person of color that automatically they're going to be able to provide exceptional care. But when we're in these spaces that are predominantly white, we could prevent the harm that can happen to our community. Even the language that we use. I was in a meeting with someone who's been a midwife for, a nurse midwife for years. And she used terminology that was offensive to someone who was black. And I brought it up in the meeting and we had a conversation about it. And she didn't realize what she was saying was harmful. But if I wasn't there, and this was, we were working on a document that was going to be published on a website. So imagine someone looking at that website and seeing that. So I was like, if I'm feeling this way, how is someone who's reading and trying to learn about midwifery, how are they gonna feel if they see this? So it's about us being in spaces so that we could prevent those systemic, systemic or structural things that can harm us. Whether it's a policy, whether it's the way we teach from our textbooks. Our textbooks are ridiculous. So to have someone to be able to say, who's teaching, look at this and say, this is what this textbook says, but this could cause harm to this community. This is how we as midwives find out about this community. So it's not just being present because of our race or ethnicity or the language we speak. But it's being present so that we can all be on the same page. Cause in Connecticut, chances are you want a midwife, she's gonna be white. But how can that midwife know how to provide safe care if they don't even interact with other people of color? So we're present, we just help prevent some of those things that can cause harm. Is, you know, I think, I could say there's midwives of all races that are really good and some that could need some support. But the thing is that how do we show up for whoever comes in front of us to provide care? And that's, that's the, that's why I think this need for diversity is present. But also if I show up as that black midwife, I need to know among my colleagues that I'm safe as well. That they're not gonna harm me as well. So how do we make sure that these environments are inclusive and safe for, for anyone who wants to practice midwifery, however, whatever route they decide to, to, and however they decide to enter midwifery?
So Lucinda, my question is, how do the birthing families know that the midwives that they reach out to know sufficient or have sufficient experience to practice? And I understand about being culturally diverse and the importance of this. But I think that in the art of midwifery, I was a midwife myself. I mean, I get a lot of this stuff. But I think one of the things that we're sort of dancing around here is is, oh, that the need for, I'll use the word consumers, I sort of really hate that, but I think it's a word that we know what it means, that people who are looking to retain a midwife to help them with a birth can be assured that the midwife has a certain minimal amount of experience and education and training and competency. And I think that that's, I think that's necessary. And I think there needs to be, and licensure that's exclusive, maybe that's not the way it goes, maybe permissive certification. But I feel like there needs to be some way that people who retain a midwife can be assured that the midwife is not just somebody who's, who's culturally appropriate, but somebody who has sufficient experience and competency. And I think we need to grapple with that. Because otherwise, I think we're talking, we're, we're talking about what I call midwifery exceptionalism. We are exceptional, but we're also healthcare practitioners. And we're in a state and an environment that licenses healthcare practitioners. So I think that that needs to be addressed.
And that's very true. And the question is, who's determining what's, you could give me a license. That doesn't mean I'm safe. It doesn't mean I'm competent. And a lot of us who enter, any of us, we go to our healthcare provider, we're taking a chance because the state says that they're licensed, that they're good. But we know, I could go, I, I went for contacts or I exam recently, my provider was not good. I had to suffer, I was, I basically woke, walked out more blinded when I went in. So we, there's no, that's, so my thing is that there's no a hundred percent guarantee that certification or licensure can say that you're competent. That's why it's so important for midwives to determine what does it mean to be competent? How does that show up? Because we know there's a lot of restrictions, a lot of laws that really don't say whether or not I'm a competent provider. It says that I took a standardized test. It says that I went to Yale and I met certain number of hours. But that still doesn't a hundred percent guarantee that I'm a safe provider. So I just, my thing is that when you put things on the books that exclude and that eliminate, because you know, in my community, I don't have access to those things. Like there are, there are students who want to be midwives, but nursing is a barrier for them. You're, so that, right now in Connecticut is saying that if I'm not a nurse, I can't be licensed and certified. But does that mean that because I'm a nurse midwife, that I'm gonna provide better care than a midwife? Someone who's went directly into midwifery without nursing. So that's a difficult question that sometimes we don't want to talk Yeah. Uh, we have to consider that. Because that's why I'm just saying that we just have to keep in mind that there are things that could be on the books. But those aren't the things that can assure me as a black woman that I'm gonna get the care that I deserve. And it's more than just clinical skills. So we know that as well. So how do we put that in a place where if someone wants to become a midwife, or there's midwives who've been practicing, you know, CPMs that have been practicing right now in Connecticut? How can we make sure that when these regulations go in play, into place, that they're gonna be able to continue to practice? So I, that's what I feel like is our charge. But if we're gonna talk about these other pieces of safe transferring to the hospital, we also have to talk about, which is the number one driver of maternal mortality, especially among women of color, indigenous and black women leading, we know that racism is the key. But is there any law or reg- law or regulation right now that could protect someone who is coming in for care that's a person of color? So it's very complex, it's not a one way answer, question. So how do we talk about it to make sure, cause that's what I'm saying, we could put all these things in place. But are we gonna improve maternal health outcomes? Are we gonna make the quality of life better for midwives, regardless of where, you know, the path that they took? So I'm just saying, those are things that we have to consider, you know, as we're moving forward.
No, I agree. I agree. I just think that there needs to be some conversation about some, even if it's imperfect, some sort of baseline for, for people to to help measure or evaluate somehow.
You know, that's what I thought these meetings were for.
Yeah. Well, that's why I mentioned it. Yeah. So we can have this conversation in this rich and wonderful and safe place.
Yeah, I think that a lot of education is taking place in these meetings about the different types of midwives and how people come to call themselves or have their communities call them a midwife. Whether it's because of their credential or because of their education and the experiences. And like you said, Lucinda, you know, your, your licensure, your certification doesn't make you a good provider. There are bad providers in every, you know, realm out there. But yeah, absolutely. We have to hold ourselves to a high standard. We have to hold our colleagues to a high standard. We owe it to our community. And I know that the time is ticking and people keep leaving, so they have to go. So I hope that this conversation can continue, but just to bring it back around to where we started. You know, we also want to be very careful. You know, like Lucinda said, you know, that when we're doing this, that we don't end up in a situation like Hawaii where even someone's aunt who's giving them traditional culturally appropriate advice, right? About something prenatally is someone that can be criminally charged. But yeah, any other thoughts and, you know, conversation ideas for the next meeting are welcome. Please go ahead and email me and I can add it to the agenda. I believe we do have a guest speaker on deck for the next meeting. And it's absolutely lovely to see you all and thank you all so much for participating. It's great to meet you, Tonya, and thank you so much, Amy, for your presentation. And thank you for emailing those slides. I did see that I just got that.
Yeah, I just sent it to you and a couple of people. So if you can make sure it gets distributed, that'd be great. Thanks.
Great. Thank you so much. Have a great day, everyone.
Bye, everybody.